Good evening, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you for asking.
Yourself?
Same in my mind.
Good.
Same in my mind, moving the gears.
So what's new, Tom?
Twice in four months. Are you stalking me?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Aberdeen Township Workshop Meeting. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice has been given to the newspapers of record posted in the municipal building and filed with the township clerk. The next open public meeting of the township council will be held on Thursday, February 20th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Here.
Councilman Martucci.
Here.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Montom.
Here.
Mayor Tegmari.
Excuse me.
So, next on the agenda was supposed to be our recreation department's presentation. We're actually going to move that to a little bit later than like our regular meeting. So we'll keep workshop. And just walk through this real quick. We have a few items here on it, that is the ordinance, which is a routine ordinance. Ordinance number one dash 2025, which is the ordinance amending the salaries and wages for employees in Town Hall. Then we have our ordinance number two dash 2025, which is the final adoption of our construction and building and housing fees. I just want to also mention that our department heads are here for any questions that council may have regards to that. And if there are any questions regarding that second ordinance, our zoning department head is here, Paula, then she can answer that. In regards to everything else, the new business, remaining are raffle licenses, which are routine, and that's part of the consent agenda.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a motion to adjourn the workshop portion of the meeting?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Paul and David?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're gonna open the regular township meeting. So, this meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice has been given to the newspaper of record posted in the municipal building and filed with the township clerk. The next open public meeting of the township council will be held on Thursday, February 20th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Roll call.
Councilman Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Here.
Councilman Martucci.
Here.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Montom.
Here.
I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for a moment. Silence, please. Salute to the flag.
Pleasure. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some proclamations tonight. I'm gonna ask Mr. Swindell if he would read the proclamation for Black History Month, please.
To the mayor, to the deputy mayor of our fellow council members, I would like to read the proclamation. I would like to attempt to read the proclamation of Black History Month, which is considered Black History Month. And it reads as thus, whereas Black History Month celebrates the many generations of African-Americans who have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our city, our state, our nation, and have enriched every aspect of our local identity. And whereas this year's theme is African-Americans and Labor, focuses on various and profound ways that work, working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, interest with collective experience in black people. Whereas as we reflect upon the significant contributions, the African-American community, it is also important to understand that many accomplishments that were made amid hardships and enable inequality. Whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continuing need to battle racism, racism to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Whereas Township of Aberdeen continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community. Now therefore, the mayor and council, Township of Aberdeen, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, prosperous for all.
Thank you, Mr. Swindell. Next, we have another proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Martucci to read the proclamation for Heart Health Month.
Deputy Mayor, my fellow council members, and our constituents, I'd like to read the Township of Aberdeen proclamation for Heart Healthy Month. Whereas February is American Heart Month, a time when all people, especially women, are encouraged to focus on cardiovascular health. And whereas heart disease is very common and the leading cause of death for men, women, and people of most racial and ethnic groups. One person dies every thirty-three seconds from cardiovascular disease, and in the United States, someone has a heart attack every forty seconds. And whereas about one in twenty adults aged twenty and older have coronary artery disease, and every year over eight hundred thousand people in the United States have a heart attack. And whereas about one of every five deaths from cardiovascular disease was among adults younger than sixty-five years old, and about one in five heart attacks are silent. The damage is done, but the person is not aware of it. And whereas, February is National Heart Month, and Friday, February 7th, 2025, has been designated as National Wear Red Day, at which town residents are encouraged to wear red to raise awareness about cardiovascular risks and diseases. Now therefore, the mayor and council of Township of Aberdeen do hereby proclaim February 2025 as National Heart Health Month, and urge all citizens in Aberdeen to show their support for preventing heart disease by learning more about their heart health, eating healthy, having a good diet, and maintaining an active lifestyle. Presented, presented, February 6th, 2025, by the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. Next, we're going to move to the hearing of citizens on agenda items only. If anyone has any questions on the agenda, please come up and take the mic and give us your name and your address. Okay, not seeing anyone. I'm going to move to the reports. Anybody on the council? Have any reports? Mr. Martucci.
I would just like to let the citizens know that Mayor Cannon is really present at home and is healthy and doing well.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hurst?
Yes, I just wanted to thank our director, DPW, and his entire staff, and incredible job doing this, the whole last weather event that we had, keeping the roads clear, providing the road, and keeping us safe.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? Just you guys?
Sure. Everyone else had a good report, but I have one that kind of stinks, but we're gonna fix it. So, Pat Newton was out. So, Pat texted me this week and told me that our township calendar has a September 31st on it, and I sent that to everybody. And so I said, "Really, Pat?" And I went over to Michael Wilson Gorg, and sure enough, there is a September 31st, which is a date that doesn't exist, and unfortunately, it's a receding date, and so the rest of the calendar is incorrect for the receding. So, I understand that Eric and Brian got on that issue, and they're gonna be sending a corrected calendar to everyone, and they're working on that. And so, my role in apologizing to the citizens of Aberdeen for sending you a three-hundred-and-sixty-six day calendar, it was a present left to us by a former employee, and this will be a lesson to the new employee, Public Information Officer, John, who was not responsible for September 31st, but will now never forget it and will let it never happen again. So, it is what it is, but that was the interesting news that I had this week, and I thought, I apparently don't have an extra day, although we thought we did.
Thank you. Thank you, one more?
Just a small note. My Aberdeen library was left a very nice donation from the Ianey family for ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yes, and they're gonna construct outside the back a butterfly garden, and they're going to do a little, kind of like a little garden with storyboard on there and something to really get nice, so they're gonna be starting that this spring.
Oh, that's fabulous. Good news. Thank you. Okay. Manager?
Yes. So, just to piggyback off of Councilman Cannon's remarks, we were notified, of course, by councilmen regarding the odds of the stake, and we currently have our new PIO here, John Walsh, welcome to the team, and he just has a few things that he's going to state to address how we're going to remedy the cavitation.
Sure. Hello. My name is John Walsh. Pleasure to meet all of you again. We've met over the past week and a couple days. Councilman Cannon has kind of stole everything I have written here. That's okay. That's all good. I'm just excited to be the new Public Information Officer and be working with you to inform and engage the residents of Aberdeen. The calendar, I have taken a look at it. I have an editable version. We've already basically finished it, so Brian, Eric, and I worked on that today. If any of you would like to take a look at it before you leave, I have extra copies, so this should be a fast turnaround, and I just hope to meet everyone in town and look forward to working with all of you. Yeah, sure.
I just want to mention, because we did discuss it, you were going to change the cover page so that he's gonna know the difference.
This will have a different.
Lost the picture day.
Yeah, it'll have a different color of the year, it'll have a different picture, it will look very similar, but I mean, to double check, you can always check if September has thirty-one or thirty-eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. So, I just have a few things for the manager's report tonight, and I know Brian is normally straight to the point, but I have just a little bit that I would like to address tonight, if that's okay. So, excuse me, I'm a little long-winded.
It's all right.
But however, this falls on my plate as the affordable housing liaison, and I feel for the need to adjust elephant in the room in regards to some of the misinformation that has been circulating around Town Hall, or around the township as a whole. And I just jotted a few things down because I want to make sure that we check everything off of our list. So recently, the township received an affordable housing obligation report, and it showed that Aberdeen's present need is set at zero. Now, in comparison to other Monmouth County neighbors of ours, that is relatively good. Just for a brief example, Freehold Borough's present need is two-seventy. Hondel's present need is one-twenty-nine. Long Branch City's present need is currently three-hundred-seventeen. Ours is zero. And through this process, like many municipalities in New Jersey, right, we accepted through a resolution, the methodology of DCA, right? We accepted the methodology, and when I say methodology, I mean their formula on how they reach our numbers, including our present need of zero and our prospective need of one-on-one, right? However, based on our planner's analysis, the data inputted by the DCA was off by two developable lots, and they did this report according to statutory criteria. When they did this, it placed us at ninety-nine prospective units, right? And what we need to understand is that that does not mean that the township needs to do anything on what is considered a developable land. The town is not obligated to build. I want also to say that the township, this council, has not approved to build five hundred units. We have not agreed to that. If that were so, those plans would go before one of your land use boards, and you will be notified of such. However, the township has not agreed to that, right? And so, because we have this prospective need, it doesn't mean we need to build, right? So what does all of this mean? All right, I'm glad you asked. Over the next coming months, the township, alongside our planner, will be engaged in the process of preparing what is called a housing element and fair share plan. And if we qualify through this analysis with our planner for a vacant land adjustment, it will determine the realistic developmental need for these vacant properties, which also may result in a drastic reduction of the fair share plan. So I don't want anyone to be afraid, I don't want anyone to be worried, because we're setting the record straight tonight. This council has not approved of five hundred units, right? We are in the process, and we've met, and I'm sorry, we are, I'm a little long, but we've met certain criterias. We voted on this resolution to get it passed to protect our township from builders' remedy, right? And I applaud this council for doing such. I applaud this council for making sure that everything is taken care of so that our present need is zero. So with that being said, we may in fact have the possibility of having vacant lots that are not developable, okay? And with that being said, we can move forward with our agenda. As I stated before, we have the routine salary and wage ordinance, we have the amending of the construction fee. I also forgot to mention that we have a resolution on Resolution 2025-39 for the National Life Group. This is no cost to the township. It is a deferred comp for employees. Yes, sir. It is a deferred comp for employees. This allows our employees to plan and prepare for their retirement, right, and it is through payroll deduction. Am I right? Our HR directors.
Yes.
Great. The remaining of the resolutions are raffle licenses. I'm going to ask that Councilman Hirsch, he asks his question, and then we're going to ask Keith Heckman to come with his report for recreation.
Thank you. Eric, could you, for the sake of our residents, or Joe, give a brief definition of builders' remedy, so you understand what that is, what that means?
So if we were not to pass that, if we didn't pass that resolution, we would be open to builders coming in and claiming that they have the right to build on properties to fit our present need or to fit the prospective need. We didn't do that. I don't like to throw anyone under the bus, but our sister-town was dealing with a similar situation, our sister-town of Madawan, and because we were able to move forward with that resolution, we were able to safeguard the township from that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Keith?
Good evening, everyone. Let's see. Okay, there we go. Bless you. Bless you. Well, thank you for having me this evening, deputy mayor, council members. I just want to take this evening and a couple of minutes to just highlight a few recreation programs from last year. I was looking through kind of our photo database, and we're trying to kind of pick some pictures that to show you this evening. I was reminded of the amount of pictures that we actually have from the programs and events that we have run from the previous year. So, I would like to encourage anyone to visit our township and recreation Facebook pages if you have an interest in going through it. I couldn't certainly cover all of the information and the programs and the activities and the events that we did this year in one council meeting. So, I encourage anybody to please visit our Facebook pages if you have an interest in viewing that. When looking at our apartment on the yearly performance, we really look at ourselves and measure on two key statistics, and one of them, the first statistic is programs. How many quality programs do we run every year? And the second statistic is participants. How many people actually sign up for these programs? So, the slide that John already moved to is, I know it's much smaller on the screen, it seemed much bigger when I was doing it on my desktop, but there are sixty-five titled programs on this particular spreadsheet, and I call them titled programs because we run these programs several times a year. For example, the Family Pizza Bingo, we run quarterly four times. The Open Gym for Children, we run once a week from September to June, so that's about thirty-five sessions. So each one of those sessions, we count as a program. So, we like to say in the recreation office that the sixty-five titled programs produced X amount of programs per year, and that X for 2024 was a hundred and ninety-one. So, those sixty-five produced a hundred and ninety-one RAN programs, and that number is up slightly from last year. The second way we like to satisfy our second statistic is that we run reports based off of rostered programs. So essentially, we run a report, we see how many people participated on the programs, and that number for this year is four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. It's actually down a little bit from last year, but that's something that we're gonna investigate a little further. Recreation has a far reach. Recreation has a far reach. We have an even further reach with the township events, such as Aberdeen Day, Jazz in the Park, the Tree Lighting and Memorial Lighting. Obviously, we can't know how many people come to those. So at least using the rostered programs as a good base is something that we use as information to help plan for the next year. So we try to meet these two stats really by offering a variety of programs, of a couple of which I'll share with you now. So if you could just, so here we are, we have a, I tried picking just a handful of programs tonight that are new and then some returning. So this was a new program for us. It really came about based off of the Daddy Daughter Dance and the Mother Son. We thought, well, how nice it would be for our family to come and dance, so there's not many opportunities for that. So we were decorating the community center for another event, we decided to have a family Halloween costume party. It actually turned out to be very nice, and it'll probably become something that we offer every year. Family Pumpkin Carving and Painting, this one has been around since we offered it a couple of years ago. You can see the background, the community center is still decorated from the dance. So we try to use some of the props that we get for one program for multiple programs as well. This is Family Pizza Bingo, it's something I just alluded to earlier. It's a pretty popular program, it sells out, it's usually between seventy and eighty-five people that participate in this program. Next slide, please. Alright, the Daddy Daughter Dance and Mother Son, this is something I alluded to earlier. We used to switch themes per the season, so it would be one theme for one and then another theme for the other set, but we decided that it just makes more sense to have the same theme for both the Mother Son and Daddy Daughter. And while going through Facebook, we happened to come across this post that you can see there of a resident and his daughter who have been coming for the four years in a row. So it's nice to see those things pop up on Facebook that really kind of grounds us back in the recreation department saying, these are the reasons why we're here, and these are the reasons why we do these things. So it's nice when we see pictures like that. National Ice Cream for Breakfast Day, this is from two thousand and twenty-four. We actually just had another one last Sunday, so this is a staple program for us as well. General Interest Bus Trips, we offered five of them last year. We went to the Circus, we went to Lion King on Broadway, Disney on Ice, that's a Mets game in the bottom right-hand corner, and that middle picture is Smithville that we go to every December. And we call them general interest bus trips, really differentiates them from the senior bus trips that we generally run, which are all located right there in the bottom right-hand corner. We take them to Atlantic City twice, Culinary Institute, you could see the rest. And the senior bus trips, we switch up, so they're not the same every year. The Senior Luncheon is something that we've been doing, this is the third season that we did it. It grows every time, held at the community center. And then the Sea Wall Walk was something that came out of the Senior Advisory Board meeting. They had an interest in planning a walking event, so we decided that we would bus them over to the Sea Wall. Most of them hadn't been there, so it was nice for them to actually see that part of town. The Veterans Day Breakfast, I wanted to put this in here because it's a unique program. It's not really a program, and I just called it a unique program, it's not really a program, and it's not really one of the larger town events. You know, we had the opportunity, this is the second year we ran it. This year, we introduced a breakfast held at the high school. We were able to really honor fifty-two resident veterans, so that was something that we're certainly proud of. And the next slide shows the second portion of that. It's called the Veterans Day Breakfast and Car Show. This is obviously the car show portion, there was about a hundred and twenty cars there at this time of year. Another big component of what we do is summer camp. There's hundreds of pictures on Facebook of all the trips that we go on, so it was hard really to snare it down to four. But the trips are coupled with some educational trips and then field trips as well. The top right corner is the New Jersey State House, the bottom left corner is USS New Jersey in Camden, and then there's Medieval Times. So we like to mix up the trips at summer camp. As much as we go on trips, the majority of the time, we're actually at schools. So here's just a couple of photos of some of the things we do. We play kickball, we have the Gaga pit set up in the gym, and then we feed them a whole bunch of sugar with cotton candy, popcorn, ice cream. So I mean, we certainly keep them busy. But just a quick note about summer camp, and we certainly heard from the residents last year, and we certainly heard from the council that the overall access to camp needed to be better, and that's something that we did work on in the offseason. And we will be pushing out all the camp information next week. That'll have registration dates and all of those things. So there's good things coming to camp this season. Just a quick look into what we're going to be offering for spring programs. I'm not really going to go through a lot of them, I just want to make a note that we're going back to Broadway for Harry Potter, the Devil's Bus Trip Ticket, we're offering pickleball for kids, which is something new, and then a couple of other repeats. These programs are online, available to view right now, and registration for them opens tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Just one more announcement, we have our health fair coming up, it's the second year we're offering it. This year, it's on a Friday, March seventh. We are bussing some seniors over from the senior center, so we hope that we get a nice output here. So if anybody's around on March seventh, please come for a visit at the community center. And lastly, all of this would not be possible without a huge... Thank you. Thank you to the council for the continued support this year. Thank you to the residents for continuing to support the recreation department. We're here to serve you, and thank you.
I want to thank you, first of all, for this great presentation, but I do want to thank you for all you've done. And I think our recreation programs are phenomenal, second to none. I challenge any other town to come up here and say they can do better.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. It's been better and better every year, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Lloyd, did you have a report by any chance? Chief Lloyd, did you want to speak?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good, we're good. Alright. Alright, let's move to the agenda. Minutes, Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Montone, council members, I'd like to make a motion, two-seventy minutes from the broadcast, regular extension. In that meeting, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Sir?
Council McKenna?
Yes.
Council Hirsch?
Yes.
Council McKelly?
Yes.
Councilman Martucci?
Yes.
Councilman Swindell?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montone?
Yes. Okay. So, Ordinance Nine A. Ordinance One, two thousand and twenty-five. Introduced and passed on first reading by title on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and published according to law, is now being taken up for further consideration in public hearing. Appended a publication in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, will be submitted. During the week prior to and up to, including the date of this meeting, copies of the full ordinance were available at no cost to the general public upon request.
An ordinance amending an ordinance entitled, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages and fringe benefits of various officials, officers and employees of the Township of Aberdeen, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey.
Okay, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment on remarks for or against the final adoption of this ordinance. Okay. Councilwoman?
To Deputy Mayor and all council members, I'd like to make a motion that Ordinance One, two thousand and twenty-five, be finally passed and adopted, and by notice of its passage and adoption, be published by title in the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five issue of the Asbury Park Press.
Sir?
Council McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman McKelly?
Yes.
Councilman Martucci?
Yes.
Councilman Swindell?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montone?
Yes. Ordinance Two dash two thousand and twenty-five, introduced and passed on first reading by title on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and published according to law, is now being taken up for further consideration and public hearing. Appended a publication in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, will be submitted during the week prior to and up to, including the date of this meeting. Copies of the full ordinance were available at no cost to the general public upon request.
Amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Aberdeen in Chapter Twelve, Building, Construction and Housing Section, twelve dash one point five fees.
I am going to open this meeting up for remarks and comments for or against before final adoption. Seeing no comments, I'm going to move to Mr. Hirsch.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Montone, and all council members, I'd like to make a motion that Ordinance Two dash two zero two five be finally passed and adopted, and by notice of its passage and adoption, be published by title in February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, issue of the Asbury Park Press. Sir?
Council McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman McKelly?
Yes.
Councilman Martucci?
Yes.
Councilman Swindell?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montone?
Yes. Appended number ten, the business.
Mayor, all council members, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which consists of Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-nine, as well as raffle licenses of car value, one-three-two-zero, one-three-two-one, one-three-two-two, one-three-two-three, and one-three-two-four.
Sir?
Council McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman McKelly?
Yes.
Councilman Martucci?
Yes.
Councilman Swindell?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montone?
Yes. Next, I'm going to open up to the public, this is the hearing of the citizens on any item at all. If anyone would like to come up to the mic, please do.
So, Mark Bishop, two forty-five Center Street. So, you had brought up earlier, obviously in response to a video that I put out earlier today. And I do appreciate that, I think that there was a little bit more of an in-depth explanation of the Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-eight, any affordable housing plan and how the town's going after it tonight. I don't think that we really got that at the last meeting. So my issue, I mean, let me start by saying, did the Township Council approve the building of five-hundred units? No, no. But what's, right now, can we get a definition for the prospective need? Because I don't think that that's gotten an accurate definition so far.
So the prospective need was sent by the DCA, however, as I previously stated, our planners are working to see if that number can be brought down drastically. They took an analysis, the DCA, of vacant properties in which they consider can be developed. However, we and our planners have sent back so that we can see what actually is developable or not. So the prospective need, we're working on that number, and we have six months of the gym to...
So the prospective need is potentially, it's a number of units that's going to be required to build affordable housing units, but this council is actively trying to get that number reduced as much as possible.
Absolutely. No, it's not, we're not required to build it.
Right. You're required, okay.
I don't see any video, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding it, but the township does not have to build affordable housing. The township has to provide a reasonable opportunity for the development of affordable housing.
Yeah.
That means taking overlay zones and putting on properties around the town, right?
Yeah.
And if you can't find those properties, then you're in time for the myriad of case law to a reduction in all of the numbers. So the present need number was already adjusted ten years ago, and it's good build. That's why it's zero, right? And I mean, you've been very, I know you do a very good dissertation, but it's very complex, very complicated. The rest of that number, a hundred and one, I guess it's down to ninety-nine already, right? That is based on demographics, it's not based on the actual conditions on the ground of the town. It's the DCA taking a formula and applying it to our demographics of our town and saying, you need ninety-nine or a hundred, which is wrong. It's ninety-nine now, I don't care, it's ninety-nine. But that doesn't mean the town has to build ninety-nine. It means that the town has to build, provide a reasonable opportunity to provide that ninety-nine. You can reduce the reasonable opportunity by saying you don't have any more vacant land. So I think the DCA identified some properties, professionals looking at it now, take the DCA, like, for example, you know what I do, I live in my law office, you know what I do, for a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
Saw the towns left around. Other towns, like, they got a map that has houses built on the median of, like, Newman Springs Road, right? And stuff like that, because the state didn't take a look at it. So then the towns get the opportunity to decide, you thought we had all this vacant land. I suspect a lot of it here that they think is vacant is the marshland that surrounds River Gardens and not the natural area. The other land that's out there, the town wasn't, it's facing underwater half the day or every twelve hours. So that we get a professional to go through their list and then pare that down. The last time we did this process, there was a number of properties that had development potential. And so the number was higher, I don't even know, I don't know what it was, but we built like two-hundred at this point. So when you go through that process, the number is likely, and I don't expect it, but it's going to be at least half or less than ninety-nine, because that's where it is everywhere. When they go through the vacant land adjustments, they determine what's parkland, what's unbuildable, stuff like that. And the planner makes that case, that's the process we enter now. And then there's going, I don't think the reason, and maybe this understanding extends to me last time saying that we don't have to do anything, right?
Yeah.
Because there's this number out there.
Yeah.
So I apologize for that, and I haven't seen your video, I don't...
I, no, I appreciate that.
Clarify, so everyone's gets on the same page.
Yes.
So, under the, so that number's coming down. And I know that there's already properties that are in the affordable housing plan. I'll give you an example, the Montone property that's off of County Road, that's basically the garbage trucks going in and out.
Excuse me, it's not this Montone.
No, Montone.
Thank you.
And Montone, you or whatever, right? That's an ongoing industrial business. But if it ever became housing, there's an overlay zone on already from last time, right? But that never happened in the last ten years. In fact, they actually expanded their business, and they're doing well there, so it's still an industrial property. But there's an overlay zone on there that that business ceases to operate at this moment in history. And maybe it'll be taken off because we don't have any more need because it's built elsewhere, whatever. But it adjusts the zoning of the town so that if it does become residential, it could be built. And it's my firm belief, and backed up by the plan last time, is that I already know that if that number gets under fifty, there's other places where we don't have to change anything that's in place right now, and we can just rehook it out of place, but we did this in two thousand and fifteen. So that was the genesis of my comment that we don't need to do anything because we already did it, was in one set, in the one number, it's already built, it's there. Right, we already paid all costs for it and all the industrial construction, and we've already seen all the traffic coming out, but it's there, and at least we're done. And then the next one, with a vacant land adjustment on a hundred in the town, it's going to be vastly reduced. And if it is down to, you know, three, four, five dozen, then it's already in place. And frankly, it's probably not going to be built, because that industrial property over there, which is our biggest worry last time, by the way, because the other ones were on like, you know, the South River Metals, which is the waste dump, or the Rustic Factory. But one of the ones that's not, it's a productive tax-paying property, that's not going to cost us anything when the overlay zones we put on, was on the Montone property. And the other thing is, the other issue that's come up as part of this is the trip, the, like, the glassworks, which is like, because it's not a movie theater, right? But in return for that as well, we negotiated the overlay zone off of the four houses in front of that property, which were originally part of that development to add to this need, but because other things took off, we fulfilled it. Because it was zero, we had flexibility to decide what we want here now. We didn't have that ten years ago, but now we do, and the point was, and I'll be long-winded, but like, we're not going to actually have to change anything, because we really already did it. And because the present need is zero, we have a lot of defenses and adjustments in the ninety-nine. And I know that that one at least had twenty to thirty units that slid into that property. That's not going to happen, so long as the industrial property is making money, they just expanded the whole lot in the front. So now I'm going to grip that down, it goes into a park building now or something. So that's the plan here, is we don't have to build it. We only have to provide a reasonable opportunity for it to be developed, which includes putting in properties that are operating going concerns, that are maybe unlikely to change for the next ten years, and then we take a look at it again. Ten years ago, we didn't have that same flexibility. That was the point I was making, is that we did the work for our property, we already took our medicine. So now we don't have to take it this time around. That probably was confusing in that there is this prospective need, and if you go on, I don't have, if it does say, oh, you have, you know, this is part of what you have to do. But it doesn't say that the town has five defenses to it, a windshield survey, vacant land adjustment, three other planning principles that are escaping at this moment, so I have experts looking at it. And then we can reduce that number further, and then if it gets down low enough, I know that, you remember that other properties are?
That were in that?
The ones that haven't been developed yet are like that. We put them on places where, you know, something like, honestly, has a substantial change for the owners who want to do that.
Suburban, yes, one, remember suburban?
Suburban propane is one, out on the island, it's on that, but that appears to be staying as an industrial property at the moment. So like, that's the plan, we don't have to build it. We don't have to say, oh, we have to find someone to bring it in and build it. We have to provide the opportunity for it, and we've already done that. We did that, you saw it, I mean, I mean, if anyone's lived here for the last ten years has seen everything that's been built, that was all... go on, I don't have, even does say, oh, you have, you know, this is part of what you have to do, but it doesn't say that the town has five defenses to it, a windshield survey, vacant land adjustment, uh, three other planning principles that are escaping at this moment, so I have experts looking at it, and, and then we can reduce that number further, and then if it gets down low enough, I know that, I don't, you remember that other properties are?
That were in that?
The ones that haven't been developed yet are like that, we put them on places where, you know, something like, honestly, has a substantial change for the owners who want to do that.
Suburban, yeah, someone, remember suburban?
Suburban, suburban propane is one, out on the island, it's on that, but that, that appears to be staying as an industrial property at the moment.
Yes.
So like, that's, that's the plan, we don't have to build it, we don't have to say, oh, we have to find someone to bring it and build it, we have to provide the opportunity for it, and we've already done that, we did that, you saw it, I mean, I mean, if anyone has lived here for the last ten years has seen everything that's been built, that was all put in place then, and that was good enough to carry us for not just ten years, we're looking at zero, probably for twenty, to where we don't really see anything else. So that, that was the point I was making last time, I'm sorry if it was inaccurate, or, I don't know, obviously, there's obviously debate, it's not going to, I mean, that's my fault, I'm sorry, but I didn't really explain enough why the ninety-nine hundred and one were here last, last time, isn't really that number, and why it doesn't actually have to be done, and if you go, there's a map somewhere here, it's hanging on the wall somewhere, I've seen, because there's a zoning map, and you look at the zoning map, you can see the overlay zones for the affordable housing, where the, like, it's secret, you can look at the map, it's patched, and then if you, if you go look them up, the ones that, where they're on there, they're, they're built, or they're on places you're like, oh, I don't know, right? So that's the, that's the plan, you always know the plan, now we don't have to go finding. That, I think that might be the, the misunderstanding.
No, I, I do appreciate that, and I think that that makes it a lot more clear, and, and I'm glad you were able to explain that now. The only issues that I.
It's not how long it took though, last time it did, like, fifteen seconds.
I understand, but, so, so that's kind of like the issue that I have, is I know that this, uh, legislation was signed back in March, and we could have handled this better, we could have handled this and had a meeting, and it could have been explained to the residents so that people aren't scared, so that people aren't worried, it could have been done any time between March twentieth to twenty-four and the last meeting possible before the deadline. We did it on the very last meeting, and it wasn't even on the agenda. So I'll tell you, like, even sitting right here, listening to it that night, I'm like, that sounds really good, it sounds really awesome, and then I go back and I start, and I have some time to look it up, you know, which I would have done if it was on the agenda, and I would have addressed it that night, but when I go back and I look it up, it didn't seem very clear, and I did reach out to all of you, you know, I emailed all of you, uh, Mr. Russell did get back, I don't think that it was.
I tried to email.
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, you know, so, um, so I appreciate that, it still wasn't clear, because there was, there was one thing, I mean, when you guys voted, you guys said that you were, uh, accepting the state's numbers, although it was reduced by two, you know, not a big change, but it just.
But either, because we can challenge the last number, the other thing also as well, and I'll give you the reason, the state didn't issue those numbers until, like, Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And then you have, now, that's, I don't know if those numbers are right or not, we had given to the professionals to give the what's over, the, the actual formula, this the high level of those applied, I think, so that, I have to tell you that, I remember that that happened, I know it's not ideal, it happened everywhere, where basically the plan, and the other thing too is, um, um, most municipal governments, uh, like, changed on January first, our planner happened to be the same person, some of the professionals changed.
Yeah.
So almost every time the state did it, get better, or, or did a special meeting at the last possible second, emergency meeting, because they didn't issue the numbers until it was basically like the late talk period, we knew that worked for the town, and no one, none of those people picked it really up until January.
So at the last meeting too, you had said, you know, pilot programs, development, these are all, you know, hot button topics, right? So I would, I would say for all issues, but I would say definitely with these development issues, there's got to be a little bit more transparency and a little bit more public involvement in these, because if we had these conversations, you know, prior, then nobody would be worried about anything, and hearing, and hearing that you guys, you know, are actively looking for ways to reduce these numbers and stuff like, that gives us a little peace of mind too. But at the same time, when I posted that video today, there was a couple of people that were arguing the opposite, they were saying I have family members that are awaiting on two to five year lists that are not getting affordable housing, and we need more, and I think that the people that want to make that point should have the opportunity to do that as well, and they're not going to be able to if we don't have these things on agendas, if the agendas aren't posted at least two days before, I think you guys have been doing much better than, you know, a year ago with that, so I do appreciate that also. Um, you know, the, the only other thing when it comes to the transparency is, is, like, just now, like, the discussion with the public and between you guys, I don't really see a lot of that on a lot of issues, like, even, not to beat a dead horse, but going back to the INS thing, right? Like, I still can't figure out where that started, I can't figure out who up there said, you know what I think we need, an INS zone over on Center Street, you know, when I had asked, asked Councilwoman Kelly, she said, I introduced it, I guess, because I lived there, so that kind of tells me that it wasn't your idea, right? So I can't find that, I don't find it in the minutes, I don't find it in any po, uh, public meetings, and I had brought up last time the executive session, maybe it's happening there, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I think that those sessions that wants that there's no need for confidentiality, that those are required to be open to the public, and they should be, and I think that you guys should take a look at that. Maybe nobody's asked for that before, and that's why they're not, and that's perfectly fine, but now I'm asking, and I, I would like if you guys could take a look at that. I don't think what I'm asking is for unreasonable. The two things that I'm always up here advocating for is more community involvement and more transparency, that's it, I don't care what your views are, we could have debates about where you stand on anything, all day, every day, but we can't have those discussions if, if those discussions aren't happening, and we don't know about when they're happening. You understand?
I just, I just want to make one comment, just so that you understand, I'm not sure if you do or mean to.
Okay.
But, you know, we are a council manager form of government, right?
Okay.
So what that means is this council hires a manager, and the manager runs the town.
Okay.
Most of what you see on our agendas are routine, um, and I've asked the manager, and you saw the deputy manager do that tonight, right, uh, to mention when something is routine, because some of these things, you know, after being here a while, after seeing them month there, after month, year after year, I mean, they just come on here. So there's no secret meeting where we're all meeting somewhere and talking about this is going on the agenda today, so sometimes there's some of that. There's also individual, uh, communication, so sometimes what we're perceiving as being maybe behind closed doors, it's not really that at all, so I get it, I mean, I do, we all, we get it, but I just want you to understand that there's a lot of what happens up here that's not, you know, there are different forms of government, if you go over to our neighbor in Madawan, they all have committees, they account, you know, they're, they're, it's different, they're commissioned.
I understand, so maybe that's the answer, maybe Brian brought that INS to you guys, and you guys were like, I don't know, let's see what, you know, where it goes, I, I don't know, you know, I just.
When it comes out here, we get to present it, and then we get to get the input from the public, and that's why I always say to people, come twice a month, you can come and sit in the audience, and you can ask us anything you want, not everybody takes advantage of that, but we're here for you, our department heads are here once a month, so wow, you get an opportunity to speak directly to the people when you have an issue, you know?
You bet, you're wrong, sorry.
But you know what I'm saying, so that's, I, I just wanted to make sure you understood.
But it's also, hey, good to hear that, because, like, so for example, because we, I don't, we genuinely do not think that, or, if we have to change the overlay zone, it's extremely minor, right? Because of, like, what we know, it, um, we didn't do any special product, because, like, we weren't changing anything, if we were going to, if we sent two hundred and five hundred, and we hadn't took a bunch of stuff, how did we have a special meeting? So, but at the same time, it's good, you know, it's good to hear that, that it's good, it could be that, that there's skepticism out there, so maybe we need to do a better job.
That's why, I mean, yeah, like, you, you see, you see, like, the sentiment after the whole INS thing, right? So when you have, it's January sixteenth meeting, never on an agenda, it's, oh, crap, we forgot, you know, blah, 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 it's kind of an incorrect, uh, explanation, and no discussion as to what the plan is there, whether you guys are for it, whether, can we increase the numbers, can we decrease the, you know, not, how are we supposed to know what you guys are thinking? Like, that's what the open public meetings are for, is so that we can get an understanding of what you guys are thinking, oh, Greg Cannon really liked this idea, Councilman Kelly really didn't like that idea, you know, that type of stuff, so I would just like to see more of those, and if you guys could please look into the executive session minutes, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Ramos, sixty, Philippi, Frank Wayne, Cliffwood. I'm here to address a growing concern that many of us in this town share, it's the sustainability of our infrastructure amid ongoing development. Our roads, once dependable, are now in serious disrepair, we frequently face broken water mains and power outages, and have, that have become all too common. As it stands, these issues are already overwhelming our system, and yet, with each new building project, the strain on our resources increases, including our police and our firefighters. I'm particularly alarmed by the ongoing development projects that continue to receive hefty tax abatement, and those that are part of pilot programs, which shift the financial burden onto our hardworking taxpayers. The impact of this is far reaching, as we are seeing not only a deterioration of the quality of our infrastructure, but also the overcrowding in our schools, our children's education is directly affected by this. As class sizes grow and resources become stretched thin, additionally, I cannot help but wonder, with every new building that goes up, how are we expected to handle the escalating demands on our roads, water, and power grids? Are we, the residents, going to be taxed out of town to compensate for the lack of long-term planning? I urge our leadership to take a closer look at towns like Hoboken, where I am born and raised. Where rapid development has created serious challenges for residents and basically kicked the middle class out, while growth is important, it must be managed carefully, ensuring that our infrastructure can sustain it without sacrificing the quality of life that makes our town so special. This is a crucial time for us to come together to find solutions that will protect our community and ensure it remains a place where future generations can thrive. Um, I just want to address one more thing, we were talking about communication and, and things like that when, uh, Mr. Bishop was speaking, and, so this is completely off what I was saying, but, um, I have a media, a, a email that's out to, uh, Mayor Taglerini, which I hope he is doing well, um, and Mr. Russell, uh, in regards to bringing in a, a business, a friend of mine is trying to open up a, or, or maintain a business in town, and he's losing his lease, and he's trying to find a place where he can keep that business, there's some zoning issues that he's running into because it's manufacturing, and I had emailed back in July of twenty twenty-four, asking if maybe the township has any recommendations, if there's a place where he can move his business, one section is in Lawrence Harbor, the other section is here in Aberdeen, um, I got a reply once from Mr. Russell, I followed up with two emails since, uh, one in, uh, the end of July, and one at the beginning of August, and I have never heard back. So I appreciate the sentiment that we're all here for you, uh, but my feeling is, um, not really.
Well, first of all, I want to tell you, this is the first time I've, uh, you didn't email me, so I can honestly say that I didn't respond to you, I thought we'd been about it, I will definitely, um, ask Mr. Russell, uh, the mayor isn't here tonight, so, uh, he can't, um.
Yeah, don't bother him.
That is, so I'm just surprised he didn't get back to you on that, because he really is, um, yeah, he works really diligently on those things, but, um, I will certainly, um, do you.
Is it all right to try and speak with you after the meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Sure, no problem.
That would be okay.
No problem, I'll sit down, I'll pull up the emails while I sit down after you guys finish, not a problem.
Thank you, we appreciate that, because then, you know, we can move forward now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor. Tom Perry, I live on the Cachal Cut Through in Aberdeen. Um, I had three topics, I know we're long in the evening here, but it added to five, I'll be brief. One goes to the communications, um, and how things are conducted here at public meetings. Way back when, uh, we used to have workshop meetings, when they were truly workshop meetings, I remember a council member that used to probably prolong those workshop meetings, asking too many questions, but they got rid of him, but it did give the public an opportunity to see what each council member thought, well, with respect to a prospective issue that's going to be placed on the, the, the executive, uh, the actual portion of the meeting, maybe bring it back, I don't know. Um, the calendar, one thing we didn't talk about was the cost, what's the cost to us? We're going to have to pub, pub.
Twelve thousand dollars.
So, and it was twelve thousand the first time?
Yeah.
All right, so we're twenty-four thousand dollars for a calendar, um, submit to the council's, maybe consideration that we do away with the calendar, I know it's a great promotional piece, but quite honestly, in this day and age, I can't tell you the last time I looked at a print calendar, although I know, Councilman Cannon, you've got it pinned to your wall.
I look for the recycling, I really have.
Yeah, I hope so, most residents rely on that calendar.
I'm sure they do.
They're going to put their recycling out, you know, if it's a holiday, what do they do with their garbage?
We'll, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll find out, but that's what people are using for, you know, people would go online, but not everybody does that.
My key to recycling is I look out my window and see what my neighbors are doing.
That's a good way to do it, too.
Um, thank you.
Who looks at the calendar?
The two developer lots that the DCA identified, do we know what they are?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, but I can definitely, I appreciate it.
Okay, I appreciate it, okay, on to my topics. I was here, the last time I was here, it was right before, I guess, our Halloween decoration contest, and I mentioned to the council, and it seemed well received, that the rewards that were given out should be local, shop local, buy local, 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 and everybody agreed, the mayor said duly noted, the recreational director was here, duly noted, I note for the holiday decorating contest in December, we gave out a hundred and fifty dollar Amazon gift card for first prize, a hundred dollar Amazon gift card for second prize, and a fifty dollar Amazon gift card for third prize. I think everybody on the council will agree with me, that's not local, and I want to know why.
Well, the manager, he, he purchased those gift cards, and then, I believe, this came up before.
It did, I brought it up, back in October.
And he stated moving forward that we would make sure that we patronize the local businesses when we do.
Okay, so we can agree from October to December, moving forward, it should have and it's section two dash forty-seven point seven, that talks about there's going to be five persons there, appointed by the manager with the advice and consent of the council for a two-year term, yada, yada, yada. And they're supposed to investigate the past and present cable television performance and plan for the future cable-related needs of the committee, reporting to the township manager and the township council, so that they may negotiate for the best contract services for cable television for the township of Aberdeen. Does that even exist anymore?
It's not really something that was like in the eighties.
Yeah, I, I've never even heard it.
Yeah, well, it's still there on the books. I do know that I think there's a line item on the budget for revenue, where we get a hundred thousand dollars or so from cable somehow?
They paid, they paid to be in the right place.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is negotiations that go on, but it's between the manager, we don't have a committee, you know what I'm saying?
No, I understand that, it's just still on the books.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking like forty years ago, when they made the original lines.
Yeah, when it was brand new to-
So- It's in our code book, under all the committees.
I had a conversation with Murray Russell earlier this week with regards to ordinances and codes that are on our books that are no longer relevant, are no longer being enforced, and we should propose that. And Mr. Russell did inform me that, that his administration, his team was going, was starting to review all of that.
You got, you got a list already?
Say again?
Do you have a list already?
Yeah, help us.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna piecemeal it out, I-
Well, why don't you do this, why don't you bring us one of we for the rest of the year, and we'll introduce the orders in the next meeting.
I'll, I'll bring you one every time I'm able to show up. I don't, I don't want to wear out my welcome. And this kind of dovetails into that, because I don't know what, what we use that a hundred thousand dollars for. Yes, it just goes into the general pot and we spend it, but-
It's like the interview receipts, it's all, it's a franchise.
So, I don't know how many still have cable TV?
Well, so they just basically created special rules for Verizon, gave them a statewide franchise. So like the Fios, so the state figured out that we were getting a hundred thousand dollars from cable a hundred weeks, forty years ago. So now, like Verizon, when they entered this space, like, I don't know, fifteen years ago, ten years ago, they gave them a special statewide franchise, so they pay the franchise tax directly to the state.
Of course they do.
It was a former way of local, because we have the right of ways, but the state usurped it on the last go around with the next technology. So that's the, that's the issue.
Okay. I, I don't know if this is related or not, but those that still do, do have cable, channel fifteen?
They're, maybe the school access?
Yes.
So I think it's, I am pretty sure that the school district decided to discontinue having, doing the TV studio at all, so I don't think they're using that at all.
Well, they're not, it's, it hasn't been up for over a year.
It hasn't been up for a while, but I think that was a, you know, a definite, they just felt it, it met its time, it was not-
So I went, I went to the school administrative offices and the gatekeeper at the door that I couldn't get past, she didn't know what I was talking about at first, so she apparently went and talked to their IT director, and the answer I got was, it was no longer funded, so they discontinued it. So I guess we were not providing funding to the school for that.
Nothing to do with us, that was a school, that was a school-driven project. I mean, that was there when I was on the school board, and it was definitely a very popular program when it first was, you know, was started. But then it started to dwindle, like, you know, over the years, the interest, everything's changed, and I think the equipment was getting older, so I think things have changed.
It has. But I, I bring it to the council's attention because it's still there. I don't know if it's one of those things, you lose, use it, you lose it, but you got a new PIO, maybe the council wants to take some interest in, you know?
The studio is not there, you don't, you don't use it.
Well, I know how we can get to know, but I know we still have a channel, so I'm just putting it out there for the council's consideration. It's out there.
You know, one of the problems with that, from, from what I remember, is that you had to go into the studio in order to, in order to really utilize that, you had to go, we did that, we did interviews in the studio, right?
Sure.
So then they started recording the meetings, but that didn't really work so well, so they began using a YouTube channel. So that's how you see board meetings now. So that studio thing didn't just, it just didn't work.
I still offer it to the council's consideration.
Oh, okay, I thought, I could be a TV star.
All right, lastly, number three, sidewalks. Do we still have a sidewalk fund?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any idea how much is in the sidewalk fund?
Um, not off the top of my head, Joe, would you know, have to know all of here? What we do still have, yes.
Okay.
I know, I know that we, the last significant, the last significant expenditure, like we use it for repairs and stuff, the last significant expenditure from it was when the, we connected our sidewalk in the B section to the nine one quarter, it was all asphalt underneath, like where the Henry Hudson Trail is.
Right.
I know that we used a significant portion of it when, when the state repaved the road, we contribute to that, so the sidewalk connects from the B section to Walgreen, Walgreen to Nine One, basically. Because their sidewalk, and it'll be all asphalt.
So, so it is a dedicated fund for sidewalks, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And what's the source of those funds?
What is, what was the question, I'm sorry.
The source of those funds, how does, how does money get into the sidewalk fund?
Well, isn't that from builders that come in and build?
It's a great question, I don't know. I know we're allowed to receive grant money into it, and I don't think that project, um-
Well, give an example, for, I mean, I'll use this as an example, Minzer Street, I've driven by there. Doesn't look like they're required to build any sidewalks over there, in the apartments where the old South River Meadow was. They didn't build any sidewalks. I don't know if the council, I don't put you on the spot, but were they required to contribute money to the sidewalk fund in exchange for not having to build sidewalks?
Were they required in the subdivision requirements, they have to make a contribution, and they have to eat the way they can?
I'm pretty sure that's what.
Okay, all right, so, the point of this is, I recall, again, many, many years ago, the apartments on the, the Parkway, I don't know what their name is. You could give me a hundred name stepping, I have no idea.
No, no, go ahead, I didn't hear what you said.
The apartments by the Parkway there, when they, when they first-
Yes, they do have a new name.
Yeah. When they, when they were built, they were required to contribute money to a sidewalk fund. And I don't know whether it was part of their approval.
Let me get that straightened out on the video. I don't think that is something-
Clip back to the TV streaming.
So, so I think they were, they either, it was part of their approval, or, and/or it might have been part of their, their pilot. They had to contribute to the sidewalk fund, and if I recall correctly, the intent of that was that at some time they were to complete, or the money was to be used to complete part of the Henry Hudson Trail from the apartments to the train station to allow their tenants to access the train station from the apartments to the train station. The, the point I'm trying to make here is like, if that money's there and it's still available, and the rest of the Henry Hudson Trail, I'd like to see it completed. I know you, you know, the council's done really well, they just got four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in grant money from the county to do improvements at Fireman's Field. Let's complete the Henry Hudson Trail. Let's, you know, get that done. And I think, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for stakeholders between Madawan, Aberdeen, the county, the school board. You know, if you complete that trail, maybe for the school board, you get them involved, we could get some money from the school, although it's still coming from us. And, you know, they start integrating into their physical education program, where kids can ride their bikes to school and get credit for a gym class, if they still have gym classes anymore. And also, we reduce, it would reduce the traffic on South Atlantic, so I can get out of my, my Cachelle Drive in the morning and get to work.
But, but Tom, Henry Hudson Trail is the county park.
Yeah.
Well, so, so-
So my understanding is that they're looking into, or they're actually in the process of applying for a huge Fed that grant to build the Tressel Bridge back and connect the nine one portion of the trail to, but it doesn't have anything to do with us. The county park system is too in that.
Well, I guess the only port that may have something to do with you, if somebody can look into it, is whether the apartments are obligated to do anything to contribute to that, and you could let the county-
Is that such a great idea?
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, you know, there, there's, that type of retro goes to a lot of towns up and down the Bay Shore, and their experience of having the trail behind their houses and neighborhoods isn't necessarily always amazingly awesome as a recreational amenity. There's sometimes that people hang out there or on the trail, you know, often places where you can't squeeze an access from the road. So I, I, you know, I agree on that, and I think it would be a great recreational amenity if we connected it, but I'm also necessarily convinced that having, missing out on having a transient trail through, you know, everyone's backyard, that's out of town.
Well, I, I don't know-
It's not a nice that it's missing from our town, and you have to walk down Lloyd Road, Church Street, where a house can see you.
I, I don't know if it's, if it's necessarily that we're missing out, but if you want to put another feather in our recreational department's hat, complete the trail. Lastly, lastly, this is, this one just came to me, garbage? I, I know it gets picked up twice a week. I don't generate that much garbage.
Although I do.
So, you know, maybe like for us that are empty nesters now, it'd be logistically and administrative challenging, but again, I just put it out there for your consideration, you know? Cut my garbage bill in half, and I only put my garbage out once a week. Thank you.
No, thank you, I'm always happy to.
Good, seeing you guys.
Okay, not seeing anyone else standing up, I guess we are closing this portion of the meeting, and I'll put my glasses on so I can see what I am doing. And there's no executive session tonight, so I'm going to ask for an adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.